Hello, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Um, we need the public input on work session agenda items. We have nobody to present to us from the public. So let's just go ahead and move on to item number three, safe and secure schools. Dr. Noel, would you like to do that introduction?
Yes, so we do, uh, the, the work session today is going to be on the security assessment and that summary that came through. And Mr. Osterquist is our security coordinator for the Supal School District. He and Bob Bray, Bob Bray's position is a part-time position with the district as well. They work together to make sure a lot of our infrastructure for security and safety are in place and, and run a lot of our tests and drills. Uh, we do have an upcoming event where we will have a evacuation process and drill to make sure that we practice those things. And we coordinated that with one of our middle schools, Ben and Rifle Middle School. And so there's a lot of different events that we will have, uh, to make sure that our school is prepared, our school district is prepared, our individual schools are prepared. Uh, some of that information is things that we can openly talk about publicly and, and share some of that information and be able to talk about. A lot of times I'll get a, a email or a message and asking, hey, can you tell us about these specific things with the school? And no, we can't. We can tell you that we have a lot of things in place and we can, uh, talk through some of the areas that we've looked at. But some of the very specifics, we obviously keep those a little bit more, uh, under wraps because of the fact that it helps to keep our students safe and secure. But there is a security assessment that we go through and to help us to make sure that we have another set of eyes that look at things. And Mr. Osterquist will go through that with us today.
Thank you, sir. All right. Well, good afternoon. Thank you very much for having me here today. What we're going to do is go through very briefly and probably at a very high level, a summary of the security assessment. So in the fall of 2024, I reached out to the South Dakota School Safety Center and asked if they would be willing to provide us with assessments of each and every one of our facilities. It's something that they do for any school within the state of South Dakota, and they agreed to do so. It was a very large undertaking for them because obviously we're the largest district in the state and it's a one-man show who does all these assessments through the South Dakota School Safety Center. So we started the process in, maybe that's gonna work. There we go. We started the assessment process in early 2025. All of the elementaries were done by the spring and then we moved on to middle school, high school, central services and IPC, and we finished those in early summer of 2025. I put together a summary of those, presented it to Mr. Conrad, so he has some of my recommendations there. Um, the school buildings themselves were assessed using the K-12 school protective measures assessment, which is provided by the United States Department of Homeland Security. The two administrative buildings use the SAFE tool, which is security assessment at first entry. And that tool is provided by the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. So the process worked like this for the school buildings. The assessor met with a principal from each building and they sat and talked through a list of questions. Those questions are available to you in that packet, so you can see some of the information that was requested of the principals. Once that conversation was complete, the administrator and the assessor completed a walkthrough of the facility to verify all of the information that was shared during that conversation about the tool. Now what's important to note about this, and Dr. Noel kind of touched on it already, but I wanted to make sure that we're aware of it. The details of each individual assessment are considered protected critical infrastructure information. So we won't share like specific details that elementary school A or whatever had this particular vulnerability identified in the assessment. It's not something that we're gonna share publicly, but we're gonna talk through like overviews in general of what we could be doing differently maybe. So the seven categories, you have that included in your handout as well, are listed here. And we're gonna go through the elementary data. We're gonna talk about the middle school data. We'll talk about high school. We'll compare the three levels. We'll open it up for questions and I'll show you to the areas where we're very strong and the areas where we could consider some additional measures. So you can see here that the elementary data is broken out by each category. Category one is that security and emergency management, and we scored very highly there. Our plans are very comprehensive. We have had these plans in place for a number of years now, and because of that, it was a very high score. That second category, the security force, that's something that because we have a very strong relationship with our police department and with our school resource officers, and we have school resource officers in multiple buildings, we also scored very highly there as well. Uh, that third category is entry control, and as you know, we do a really good job of providing only one access point in all of our buildings. You come through one door, that area is secured. You must pass through a secure door to gain access to the buildings. In addition to that, we also have the visitor management system. So we have people, if visitors or guests come into our buildings, they sign in through that visitor management system and then are vetted through a wanted persons database and a sex offender database as well. Fencing and gates, you're gonna see that that gets just a little bit lower, but I want to tell you this. So the assessor was very clear that even though some of these, now if you're me, like when you were in school, if you scored less than a ninety, you kind of looked at this and you went, oh, I didn't do very well. Trust me, he was, he, he shared with me that we're doing well, even if the scores aren't all up in the nineties, right? So we're doing okay. Um, so fencing and gates, there were some areas where we could improve. Uh, parking and barriers, I'll tell you that the reason that that particular category is a little lower than the rest is because some of the things that are being evaluated are things that are beyond our control. And one of those that's a specific thing is do you have enough standoff distance from the building to where any vehicle could park? And they're thinking about devices and other things that could impact the building. I'm like, well, we can't control that. We can't control the distance from the building to the street. It is what it is. So that's where some of that got a little bit lower, so it's not anything that we could really adjust even if we wanted to. The building envelope number six is the perimeter of the building, and that's that area, you know, are the exterior doors all secure? Do we have parking and other barriers that prohibit vehicle traffic from accessing the building? And then lastly, our video surveillance is that category seven, and you'll see that those are, are still very hot. A note that I think we should make here is that when we look at these trend lines, I think you'll see between the elementary, middle school and high school, the trend lines are very, very similar. You're going to find that there's one category and it's the fencing category. In middle school and high school, that's a little bit higher, and we'll talk through why that is when we get there. So middle school data, you can see the trend line is generally the same in each category. If we overlaid all of the elementary bar graphs on that single cumulative bar graph, it was almost identical. The variations were so minor that when I did the math, I'm like, I really didn't even need to do the math. I could have picked one and it would have looked the same, so it was fine. Um, so that fencing for middle school and high school, that's the one category you can see is a little higher here. They were asked if they had fences, if they had gates, et cetera. And one of the things that I think pushed them up is they were thinking of their athletic facilities that are attached to the buildings. And yes, those do have high fences. They do have gates. They are locked. They are access controlled. But if we look at it from the perspective of a full campus fencing, I think you'd see the trend line would be identical to elementary school. Because what they're asking us here is do... Hey, I'm back. I don't know what happened. Maybe Tori shut in the back room and turned me back on again. I don't know. Um, do we have full perimeter fencing around our campuses? And that's not something that we have done historically. It is something that they recommend that we consider, um, but it's not something we have done. So that's why that particular line for middle school and high school looks just a little bit different. Um, yeah, so we'll move on to the high school data. As you can see, it's almost identical to the middle school. Um, the fencing one again is higher than elementary, but I think it's specifically because of those athletic facilities. And that's what they were referencing when they answered the fencing question. So grade level comparison, I just threw that up there so that we could see our buildings. If you look at where we're at, security and emergency management plans, we are scoring very high. There was a particular question, and I won't give the details of the question, but it really threw me off because as I read all of these things that asked, does this district have a particular procedure in place for this event? And almost every single person answered that it didn't exist, and I went, hold on. So I've read through our emergency operations plan. Sure enough, it exists. It's there. It was just buried. So I'm like, well, if you can't find it, I'm gonna make it easier for you to find. So I pulled that procedure out, made it its own thing, went to clerical end services in the fall and just went, hey, just so you know, it's there. So we fixed that, I hope. We'll see. But it was a weird one. All right. So what were some of the strengths that were identified in this? Our plans and training are very strong. Our relationship with the police department is very strong. The fact that we have secured buildings in that one point of entry, that's exceptional. And I wish I could say that it was that way all over, but on, I do work, I do teach for the School Resource Officer Association, the National Association, and I get to see other buildings and other districts, and I'm telling you, we're ahead of the curve. We're, we're doing a really good job here, and the fact that we've been doing some of these things for twenty-plus years puts us well ahead of where a lot of other school districts are. We have behavioral threat assessment teams in each and every building. We have the ability to notify people in a mass notification capacity. We can contact parents. We can contact staff. We can let them know there's an event taking place at this particular location and we'll get you additional information. So that was another one of the strengths. We already mentioned the visitor management system. He was impressed when he entered our buildings that most of them, almost all of them had wide open hallways and stairwells. He mentioned that he's been in places where it's difficult to walk three people down a hallway, so that was good. And then our video surveillance is, is also really good. You might have noticed in the elementary data that the video surveillance there was just slightly lower than the middle school and high school. And I think for the elementary principals that were completing this information with our assessor, they are interested in additional cameras at their facilities. And I know this is something that we've talked about in the past. I think we discussed this at last year's Safe and Secure update for the board. And so that's just something that I know we've talked about and I know we're looking at for the future. So that line hopefully would go up if we did the assessments again. Areas that the assessor thought we could consider for some areas of improvement is consider expanding the use of panic buttons. As you know, we currently have panic buttons in specific locations within our buildings. Uh, one of the options that is available to us is to provide wearable devices for individual staff members that are panic devices. Expand the locations of panic buttons. That was one of the things. This is a fairly big one, and it's something that is being implemented nationwide. The federal legislature has tried to push this through as, as federal law a couple of different times, and it has not happened. Multiple states, I think we're right around twenty-six states right now have passed this law. It's referenced as Alyssa's Law, and it's to expedite the responding law enforcement officers in the event that anything happens at a building. And I've been in contact with Metro Communications, the dispatch center for our area, and they're open to the idea of us implementing some type of electronic solution that would directly communicate with Metro and say, hey, we need an, I mean, an emergency response and we need that response right now. So that's another thing that was here, uh, included here as a recommendation. Increased use of student IDs, uh, it's something that we are not super diligent about anymore, but that was one of the recommendations, and it actually came up that there was, you know, we don't require students to display their IDs. And I'm dating myself, but I remember in the early two thousands when I was a school resource officer at Axle Park Middle School, that was a requirement. You had to come in, you had to have your ID displayed. Every staff member did and every student did. And along the way, I'm not sure when or where that changed, but that was one of the options that he wanted us to consider. We talked briefly about the fencing already, so we don't need to chat about it again. Also consider additional use of, of bollards to prevent vehicle access onto playgrounds, vehicle access to buildings, um, just to, to provide a little bit better barrier for us in that area. And then enhance screening and security at after-school events. If you look at some of the questions, you'll see that they're asking very specifically if certain people are screened, if certain items are screened during school, after school. It's very detailed. And I'm not sure that that's a direction we would ever want to go for some of those questions, but it was an option that he wanted us to consider. And I actually met with my, uh, staff Safe and Secure Committee last night, and one of their suggestions, not knowing any of this information, this isn't something that we talked about, was we'd like to see enhanced screening for after-school events. So that's just one of those things. Um, oh my goodness, that was fast. Where am I? There we go. Administrative buildings, the tool is a little bit different, and the results were presented in a narrative format. They were not presented as a score. So I'm not gonna give you all the details because literally it was like reading a novel to get through all of it. So I'm gonna try to hit the highlights for you to prevent you from having to read the novel. But they had two areas, the commendable actions and practices, and then vulnerabilities and options for consideration. And when we look at central services, they were pleased with the fencing to protect some of the outside storage areas. That was good, that the gates were locked after hours, that things were monitored. With these particular assessments, rather than an administrator being the one to meet with the assessor, I asked individual staff members to meet with him, I shouldn't say individual, a group of staff members to meet with the assessor. And they were representative of the different departments that work within each building. So I picked, I think it was four or five, five people from central services, from different departments within the building to sit down and meet with him as a group. And overall, he said that they were very interested in keeping the building secure. They were engaged and invested in the process. Uh, entry control was good, but could be better, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. And again, the increased use of panic buttons at the administrative buildings as well. Uh, the staff members that he spoke to weren't sure if first responders had ever toured the facility to know its layout. So that's something that I'm working with the police department to set up so that the officers that are assigned to that area as their permanent patrol section, um, can come and tour, so they have an idea of how that building is laid out. He wanted us to consider establishing a safety team for that building. So a team of four or five people that are responsible for safe and secure implementation within opera, within the central services building. And again, adjusting the access control. He likes that it's controlled like just someone a little closer to where people come in. So when you walk in the door, you're actually meeting a human being instead of opening up into a hole. Yeah, that was central services. See, I'm afraid to push it twice because it's gonna jump to the end again. Okay, I made it. All right. Here at the Instructional Planning Center, entry and access control, very pleased with that. The planning and drills that we conduct here, the staff were pleased with how we are approaching that. They felt like they were well-informed. Um, the lighting, he, he comes after dark just to check, and he was pleased with the way things were lit up here at IPC. And then he was happy that it seemed like everybody here was invested in owning the building, wanting to be a part of the process. So that was a good deal. Again, he suggested a first responder tour here because the staff weren't sure if that had ever happened. I know they have been here because I'm, I bring them in and they look around. So I know they've been here. They just weren't aware that that was happening. Wanted to make sure that we had an alternate site designated for business continuity. So in the event of, say, a power outage that takes IPC completely out of the mix, and there's nothing that we can do here because power's not coming back, where are we gonna go to make sure that we're still operating as a district? And he threw that out there. I'm like, good question. We'll talk about it. We'll see. So we'll see how that goes. And then he mentioned here for IPC, the fencing as well. There's a concept within the crime prevention through environmental design world called territoriality. And what fencing does is help establish that territoriality so that people know, hey, this is school district property and this is not school district property. And if you think about Rosa Parks, and if you think about the very beautiful fence that they have along some of the perimeter of theirs, it's a visual deterrent for sure, and it does establish territoriality. It's definitely not a physical deterrent because it's short and easy to scale. But it's, that's kind of what he's getting at, is establishing that boundary. This is clearly where the school district starts and everything else ends. So that is my presentation on the safety or on the security assessments provided by the South Dakota School Safety Center. Um, I'm not sure how the work session works because I've never had to do it before. I don't know if I have to ask you to acknowledge it or whatever, but if you do, I'm asking you to do that. And if not, I'll just stand by for any questions you might have. Perfect.
I have a question. Um, I'm just wondering how have these protection measures impacted new construction? What's the communication like between you and your colleagues?
So anytime there's something that I think needs to be adjusted. If my perspective from a safe and secure schools view, I, I've communicated that with Mr. Fryder. He's aware. It's not news to him. It's things that we've discussed and so, and, and it's, it's good communication. We're, we're open and we're clear that things need to be done. Maybe won't get done today, but we can put it into the implementation plan down the road.
And even through that process of building the new schools with the middle school and the high school, uh, we did have teams of individuals that were participated in that process, that were part of our law enforcement and to make sure. And even after the completion of, uh, a group went through to see and assess because obviously in some of the, I shouldn't say obviously, but in some of those new buildings, there is more open space, more outside sunlight, things like that, which is awesome. It also creates some other difficulties as far as safety and security. And so we did have a team go through as well after that, and even made some adaptations to the building. Uh, you know, as far as curtains and some screens and some things like that afterwards, just to make sure that we'd have those things safe and secure. So it is definitely part of the process, um, before and after, as we go through.
I'm not sure if you can share, but if you can, what's the update on the Homeland Security Grant? Um, I know there was supposed to be like a decrease in that. Is that still happening? Are we okay? Are you able to answer that today?
So there have been, well, so the state homeland security funds we've applied for now for the past three years. And for two years we were awarded, the last award was for the distributed antenna systems that would allow first responders to communicate within our buildings. And it turned out that there was new technology that was being implemented by the state and by the city that allowed the first responder radios to connect directly to wifi. And so we didn't need those distributed antenna systems, which saved us. I'm sure Jeff could give you this specific number, but it was about a hundred thousand dollars or more per building, right? Right? So it saved us that money. And so what we had written for initially was over a hundred thousand dollars. We were awarded the whole amount, and then it all got reduced. And so they were gonna give us like fifty thousand bucks. Well, I was able to work with the state and with the city to repurpose that money so that first responders could use it to purchase the wifi-enabled radios. So we're accomplishing the same goal. We're just going about it in a different way. This current round of homeland security funding, we applied for some additional security stuff, and it's still all on hold. I have heard no updates about if we're ever gonna be awarded or not, but I'm in a holding pattern on that one, so.
What could it be used for? Or what are you hoping to do?
I'm trying to remember. It's been about a year since I wrote the grant. Do you remember what I applied for? I don't remember what I applied for. Let me think about that for a minute. I feel like it might have been an additional screening point for Axle Park.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, that's what it was. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because we did with some of those dollars and had the, because now when individuals go into Howard Wood Field, uh, the access screening points there and, and that process that has been utilized there was part of that. And then also with, uh, some of our screening points that happened at Axle Park as well. Another thing you mentioned about the, the radio antennas, but we are in the process now, and that was a report given a while back now, a year and a half or I suppose ago, uh, of replacing all the radios in, in the entire district. And we're on year number two of three of that entire process, so it'll be completed through this next summer then in the, the third installment of all those radios throughout the entire district, so that we do have that continuity across our entire district.
I know you kind of mentioned this as you were going through, but the, I forget what the, it was called, the items of concern or whatever, you know, that list. First of all, I guess, what would you think would be the one thing that we could probably check off our list on that easier? And number two, when it comes to looking at those lists and making decisions on it and putting a checklist together, we can do this one and this one, or we should do this one, how does that process work? Where does that discussion start?
Sure.
How does that go?
So I look at it from two perspectives. I, I look at what is the one thing that would be... I look at what is the one thing that would be the most beneficial to us as a district? Putting money aside, right? I just say, okay, what is the one thing? If I had all the money in the world and I could do whatever I wanted to do, what's the one thing? And then I look at it, what are the things that we can do that cost next to no money that still enhance our safety and our security? And one of the things that was recommended, and I didn't specifically detail it here, was taking some of the exterior door handles away to prevent barricading, so that we don't, we don't limit evacuation in the event of something happening, and we don't limit first responder entry in the event of something like that happening. And that's a next to zero-dollar fix. That's removing one door handle from a set of double doors, and Jeff could, whatever, he keeps giving me the look. But that's a next to zero-dollar fix. It doesn't cost us a lot of money to do that. Something that would cost a lot of money, but if I was going to put it at the top of my list because I had all the money in the world, it would be that immediate connection to the first responders. It would be that immediate electronic notification to Metro Communications to expedite that response, so we don't have to go through the process of calling 911, the process of going through the 911 questionnaire, because they have a protocol that they have to follow when you call them. And if they're getting that direct notification from us that says, we need help, and we need help right now, that would expedite officers getting to us when we need. I mean, that is, that's how I do it. I look at it and go, what is the most important thing? What would give us the most, what would benefit us the most in keeping our students and staff safe? And that direct communication to law enforcement, that's where I'm getting at.
I think part of that is the process of your team that you have together, that you meet with.
Oh, sure, sure, okay, that makes sense.
And the discussion.
No, sorry about that. So like I said, I meet with a staff committee twice a year, I meet with parents and guardians twice a year. I talk through with them what things they think are priorities. And over the years, those priorities have changed. This is the fourth year that I've been doing that now. And the first year, there was a lot of focus on MTSS and PBIS, and what are we doing to intervene early with behaviors? And now that as a district, we have done that, we have lived in that prevention realm to try to cut off adverse behavior before it starts, that has kind of settled to not be a priority anymore. And now people are talking about screening points. They're talking about how do we expedite law enforcement response? And so it's working through those stakeholders that have an investment in what we do, and talking through the process with them, and then taking that information and establishing
So if I was going to ask you to look at implementing any of those things, and this comes from lifelong educator perspective, that student ID thing, I mean, it's kind of the bane of our existence, like cell phones.
It is.
But if we could figure out a way to have student IDs displayed that kids didn't think was, I don't know, burdensome, I think that would be very helpful.
If I had an answer for that, I'd give it to you now, and I'd write a book and tell everybody how to do it, but I don't have an answer.
They've done a really nice job with the entry systems at the high schools, because the high school have the open lunches. And the entry system, when they're coming back through to show their IDs, and if they don't have that ID, then they have to do a check-in process, and it inhibits some of their time. So it's kind of helped to be able to go through to have it. Now, the ID process that is talked about more often is kids wearing the ID all day long. And it is, it's a give and take, depending on which way we want to go. At one time, that was enforced stridently, and kids followed that expectations, but let there be no question, there was a little bit larger number of office referrals then when kids didn't have the ID. And you tried to reinforce in a positive way. I'd have bags of candy, and we'd go around to a classroom. I know candy's not a great thing to motivate, but yet it does. And if everybody in the classroom had their ID on, everybody got candy in that classroom, and if somebody did not. And the participation rate was very high, but it did lead to a few more officer referrals. And then it was, you know, tailored back to the fact that they had to present it when asked, they need to use it at the lunch line, and they need to use it when they're coming and going from the school. So it's where do we want to stand in that happy medium, and does it make it safer when they actually wear the ID? It's a great question. It can become a little bit of a battleground with officer referrals, but yet they know if they don't have their ID when they're going to and from open lunch, and that's a consistent thing that they're neglecting, then they lose the open lunch. And so that's a big motivator for them. So it's a good question. We've gone back and forth on that quite a bit, even as a high school principal group.
Good question, but not an easy one to answer.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I will also say that it's amazing, as a high school principal for a number of years, of when kids come through, you can identify who is your student and who is not your student. It becomes harder, and those that work the front doors, they know that same thing, even though there is 1,900 students, you can do that. And the big part, though, is it may not always be one of us that are at that front door area, so that can make it a little more difficult, yeah.
Excellent. Anything else?
This is not public information, correct?
So the categories that are listed on that front page are public information. I would prefer that the specific questions that we were asked not be public information, and they're protected under that critical infrastructure guidelines.
I just wanted to remind all board members.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure it was noted, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Informative, appreciate it. We have left sufficient time for board member committee updates, if anybody has updates that they'd like to share for the good of the whole.
I have one. I gave you the agenda for the STC policy update. Our committee meets tomorrow, and you'll see that there's a number of policies. We've had some back and forth on quite a few of these, and I'll remind you again that they've changed from the NEPHIN coding system to a numerical coding system. And with that change, they've, they're trying to, they've eliminated the regulations. So they've tried to roll in the regulatory part into the full-on perceived policy. And sometimes it gets kind of tripped up, is this policy, is this definition, is this what it is a little bit? But it's very good discussion that we have. Generally speaking, when it says a new policy, you know, that will auto, probably, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Brett, but that'll probably go for a second, you know, two readings if it's new policy. If legal references have been added, or the law's been changed, and we have to comply with law, then we will automatically go to two reads. If it's some minor revisions, we'll probably just do a one read on those. But like I said, we have the meeting tomorrow, so we'll find out what our actions are. It's a, it's a healthy lot of discussion and the comments and the policies, so it's good. What I want to say to you as colleagues here, if you want to see any of these policies, I'll wait till after our meeting tomorrow until the final, things are, you know, straightened out, you know, checked out. But if you want to have a copy of any of them, just email me or text me, and I'll send you a policy. Otherwise, it's pages and pages and pages of policies that if you don't want all of them, I won't send you all of them, but if you're interested in particular ones, I will be happy to send you the drafts of the particular ones. Basically, the one that's had the most discussion is the social media. What number is that? Oh, it's on the second page or the backside, the STC 1011, social media and acceptable use. There's been a lot of discussions on that. And, you know, you have to kind of stumble through what's defined, what's allowed, you know, what's opinion, what's official college statements, that kind of thing. So it's been healthy discussion, it's been good. We do it all on Google Sheet until we meet as a group. So, so I appreciate that. I've got still a couple of questions for the committee tomorrow, but I appreciate that, you know, I get answers when I type in my questions, and I appreciate that Brett tries to keep us on the straight and narrow. One of us has a tendency on this committee to wander a little bit, I'm not, you know, that would be me. But, you know, my idea of policy is succinct, you know, concise, but, and then you leave the nitty-gritty to the regulation. But, but like I said, there's a few growing pains with converting, but I think overall, it's a fascinating committee, they're a great job, and I've enjoyed my work. You have any questions?
Oh, thank you for your attention to detail, on being thorough and earnest, and Brett keeping everybody on task as well. Some good system.
So I can give you a little update on the Associate School Board meetings that we had in peer a week ago, and I'll run off some handouts for Sunday night. Did send out an email about if you're interested in supporting legislation, and hopefully, you know, do that. But it's going to be a tough grind. And we have actually, something that I like very much, because I'm for less than more, we've actually narrowed it down to 10 positions, 10 things we'd like to push forward, 10 things that we stand on as opposed to this for that, and I'll get you a copy of that. But it was the shortest meeting on Saturday that I've been, the first time it was three and a half hours, it was like 45 minutes, because we condensed all those things in a much better organized manner, so. And when they vote on what they're going to do, they go through a amendment, the body votes, so the board of directors, and then there's general members, the school boards all over South Dakota. And it was well-represented, so. I'll give you some information. They have some general things that they want to accomplish this year, in no particular order. But it's, it's interesting to work with those people because they're in peer, and they're, you know, they're there every day. If you get a chance to look at some of their stuff, they've got a lot of nice stuff there. So. You have any questions? You can wait till I give you the, Dale, or you can start right now.
Thank you. I have accessible housing committee updates. I believe Dr. Moe put in this nice little map in one of our memos to show that there's progress on Marcelo Lobo Elementary School path. They're hoping that this will be completed by summer of '26, so next year, hoping that it's fully done, for students to be able to utilize for school year next year, which is really exciting. They got the initial controlled burn all done, I guess that's like the biggest undertaking, so got that completed. And then for Terry Redlin, there was notes about there being heavy traffic for Sixth and Lewis. So if anybody drives on that road often, like I do, being mindful of watching for concerns on Sixth Street to support our Terry Redlin kids crossing the street successfully, just because we only have one flashing light sign, but there's talks of possibly getting another one to get to the park and keep people safe. So that was really interesting to learn about, that they're keeping an eye on that. The other board I'm on is the accessible housing, and they shared their community homelessness extreme weather plan. And if you want a copy of that, let me know, but it just lists out the different shelters, their capacity, and then the numbers that you could be calling for either street outreach or communication. But I believe our liaisons and social workers should all have this, but if you're curious, I have a copy for you to take a snapshot of.
I have a quick update with some specific details that I can get out to you if you're interested, but just a broad overview. The education foundation established the budget for 2026. The fundraising goal is $515,000. That is a 3% increase over 2025. And I do have a breakdown of each fundraising goal within that, and if you have any interest, I'm glad to provide that to you, but just think the main point to take away is that it's a 3% increase in fundraising goal over 2025. So that's great news. Any specific questions on that? I could look them up. Okay, Dale, I know you had one last comment.
I would never assume to speak for anybody else, but Elizabeth, the Nana and I had the opportunity to visit the Dudley Hospitality House, Bishop Dudley Hospitality House this morning, on kind of a tour for elected officials. And I just want to say publicly that when Nan asked the questions about what, is there something more that the school district can do, when we found out that 90 children had been served this school year? And they just sang the praises of our McKinney Vento staff, and what a great job they do, and how quickly they handle any situation. When a child comes in in their intake, they immediately contact our staff here, and they immediately take care and get that child settled. Because if you're suddenly a family in turmoil, knowing where your children are going to go to school and getting them settled in school takes a lot of the stress off of the parents who are trying to reorganize their lives. So it was really awesome to hear that praise coming about our school district employees because we know we have the best in the region. So I don't know if either of you two have anything to add to that, but it was really great.
I think, Nana, it might have been you that asked how many of the kids were school-aged, and they said that most of them were, especially if you consider that the second they turn three years old and can qualify for preschool, that, yeah, we're getting them in there. So I thought that was, that was very telling of just how on top of it our staff is.
They need a ride to school, we figure out how to get them to school. It was, it was heartwarming to hear how our district provides exceptional service to all kids. Thank you, Dale, for your service on that committee and bringing that, bringing our own good news report to our work session. That was perfect. Anything else for the good of the whole? Okay, we will move to adjourn. Grab motion. All in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned.